Okay, welcome everyone, and I do see we have a citizen here. Bruce Miller, thanks for coming. Bruce is, just so everyone knows, an esteemed resident of the Plaza, but also very active with the Clayton condo board association. So you're here, I know, to learn more about this for them. Okay, so I guess at this point, we should call the roll.
We actually don't need to.
We don't, we don't.
Session, we can go right.
Oh, we don't, well, it's on, it's on here.
Oh, okay.
So I said, I thought we had to do it. So if we don't get to do it, we won't do it. Do we have anybody, we don't have anyone online either, just?
We have one.
Bobby, okay, wonder who that is. All right, so if we don't have to do that, I'll call for a public request and petitions. If anybody has something to ask us about that's not on our agenda today, please let us know now. And see none, we can move into the consent agenda. Mr. City Manager, is that this? This is what was on the top of my stack right?
Oh, that's for, uh, this is actually for Tuesday night.
Oh, no, okay.
There you go.
Never mind. I'm sorry, you guys. This one's sitting here for me, so I just like a, like a robot start reading it.
Tuesday night will be easy.
Today is just our budget discussion.
There we go.
So I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
All right, great.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
I'm on, you know.
There was another end out there and I wasn't ready for it. Okay, so we are going to talk about the budget today, one of my favorite discussions of the year. So we have the fiscal year 2024 budget prepared. I know that was sent out to the board. It was posted online as well. Yesterday, I did send out some supplemental information with the five-year CIP in a little more detail. So we're going to talk about both of those things today. Uh, but we're going to go through the budget overview first, uh, really focusing on the operating budget. And then we'll talk about the five-year CIP and we do need some direction there as, uh, as far as, uh, what we'd like to do with the municipal garage financing. So, uh, we will discuss that as well. So let's jump in here. We always start with this line graph, just to show kind of how revenue and expenditures are working relative to one another. We go back to 2020 on this list, so, uh, right at the, the beginning of the pandemic, the 2020 fiscal year, if you recall, was, was kind of strange, where half of it was a normal year and then the second half is very abnormal. The solid blue line that you see on the graph is revenue. The dash blue line is revenue without the operational transfer. So the $600,000 to $700,000 a year that's transferred from the capital fund to the general fund and without the ARPA funds. So the federal dollars that came in during the pandemic that helped us offset everything. If you want to look at true revenue that's, that's coming into the operating fund versus operating expenses, you're going to look at the dash line here. Uh, so you can see our, our trend here and, and the way things have been headed. So, uh, no surprise really with, with the pandemic here where it was, uh, a slight increase getting into 2021. And then this, uh, a little bit of a ramp up into 2022 as things started to normalize a little bit. Um, and then, um, again, you can see that's, it's relatively flat here into 23 and then starting to pick up. Um, and again, I'll switch back to the dash line where we take out the transfer in that federal money that's coming in. Here's the cross that we talked about, uh, and that's the deficit that we see for fiscal year 23. That's where expenditure, expenditure started to outpace revenue and really take over there. So, uh, the deficit that we had projected for 2023, uh, was more significant than what actually materialized, uh, which isn't really surprising because as we talked about with the third quarter financial report, uh, sales tax was, was much stronger than we thought it would be. Going into fiscal year 23, utility tax was better. Parking revenue was better, so we were a lot better on the revenue side. And we had a lot of savings on the expenditure side, uh, because of personnel turnover more than anything else. We had a lot of vacant positions. So when you look at an annual budget, just like we will here in a little while, this assumes that every position the city has is funded all year long. Uh, so as soon as we have turnover, you start to have some savings there. So when budgets are prepared, uh, you're always putting in your expenditures as if you will spend every possible dollar. And on the revenue side, you're always a little bit conservative, making sure that you hit those marks. You don't want to be in a position where you fall under, uh, what you put in the budget. So, uh, 2023, no surprises, uh, there, uh, in the end. And that's kind of how things were tracking with the financial report, still running a deficit. But again, not quite as much as we had anticipated. Uh, this green line that you see here from 2023 to 2024 is relatively flat. It increases just a little bit. You would expect it to take off quite a bit more because we're seeing big increases in personnel costs with the compensation study. Uh, we're also seeing commodities and contractual services continue to increase. The reason that line is flatter, uh, than you would expect is because the big line item for waste collection billing has been taken out. So when you subtract that over $2 million out of it, you can see the green line start to flatten. Had that not happened, uh, where this line is just on, just over the $30 million mark, it would have been up here. Uh, we would have had a pretty significant, uh, deficit going into 24 that would have been anticipated. So, uh, we're going to, we're going to be the opposite of that this year. Uh, and we are anticipating a surplus for the first time, uh, in a while without that federal assistance, which is good. Any questions on these, these lines here? Again, we've kind of seen this play out over time and, uh, it's always good to see the dash line on there because it's, uh, like I said, a truer picture of what's coming in and what's going out. The operating fund, all right. Uh, general fund highlights revenues. Again, we calculate revenues just like every other year. Those projections based on the best information available, the trends that we've seen, uh, and also industry projections. On the expenditure side, our greatest increase this year in expenditures, no, no, uh, no question here is, uh, in personnel. So about 12.2% higher than fiscal year 23. So that's the compensation study that went into effect that averaged just under 7% um, per employee. So that's a, a big increase there, uh, to get it right with the market. But then also those, um, benefits that go along with it, uh, you'll see an increase on that side. So the big increase here is, uh, personnel. Uh, we did have increases in contractual services and commodities. We went through in line item detail like we do every year and cut things back as far as possible. We've been doing that since the pandemic. Our department has been really good about, uh, making it work and not adding a lot of new stuff along the way. So as we go through the budget, I won't have a lot of new things to report that are going into the budget. Uh, we've been able to, to really maintain our service level, uh, without adding a lot to it, uh, knowing that we had to run things lean. So, uh, that continues in this budget. Sources of revenue, uh, this has been fluctuating a little bit year to year, but you can see that still hasn't changed a whole lot. Uh, we are pretty well diversified. However, uh, the property tax, which is always your most stable line of tax, still represents only a quarter of our total revenue. So utility tax at 19%, sales tax at 20%, sales tax, of course, is your most volatile tax. License permits and fees, that slice of the pie has got a little bit bigger this year. We have some big projects that have gone through the zoning process. It would be pulling bill, uh, building permits this year. Uh, so that's really going to help us on the, uh, building permit revenue. Uh, parking, we've seen that go up, uh, over the last year or so, so that's encouraging. It's 7%. Uh, parks and recreation program revenue, and this is aside from the center, is at 3%. Uh, fines and forfeitures at 3%. And then we have some grants there that just make up 6%. A few other things over here. But again, property tax, your most stable tax, still only a quarter of our total revenue. Uh, so as we saw at the pandemic, uh, when our property taxes that small of a slice, uh, you're always at risk of some volatility, putting you in a position where you have to go to your fund balance. Hopefully this year will be like, uh, all the other normal years, normal years we had prior to the pandemic, uh, where uh, the sales tax comes in without any issue. Uh, personnel is 73% of the general fund. So that's our largest expense by far. That's salaries, overtime, social security, Medicare and benefits. Contractual services is 21%. Waste collection, utilities, software licensing, lifeguards, insurance, uh, legal services and those other, um, contracts that we had throughout the year. The reason we left waste collection on there is we still have about a $200,000 bill that we'll have to pay, uh, for the city facilities, all the trash cans in the CBD and, and, and in the Devon area. Uh, we still have some, uh, waste collection ourselves, uh, although the resident billing has been turned over. And then commodities is up from 4% of the budget to 5% of the budget. Uh, that's due mostly to inflation. Uh, we have certain items like salt, which is normally a big expenditure. Uh, we didn't have to buy our budget for as much this year, uh, because last year we didn't have to throw a lot of salt. So the salt dome is full, uh, which helps. So there's some savings there. Uh, but no surprise that that number has gone up at least a percentage point, um, with, uh, again, inflationary pressure.
How much is our waste collection?
Um, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I think it's about 200 and 200 and some change, $200,000.
A year, okay.
A year, and that covers the festivals, special events, all of the waste containers that are in the downtown area and the Devon area, and then all of the city facilities. That's 200,000 annually. Personnel highlights, so we have a few, um, adjustments here. Administrative services, if you've looked through the budget and looked, uh, at administration and you'll notice there's a new communications division. We're doing that more for budgetary purposes than anything else, so we know our true communication expenses. Uh, where before, uh, we had that function, but we were funding that function by using, you know, X percentage from this department and X percentage from this department. This makes it a lot easier to account for. Uh, so we've created that division for budgetary purposes. We have, uh, within finance, we reclassified a senior accountant position to lead payroll and AP administrator. Uh, that's to help us operationally down there, um, where payroll needs to be a standalone position. So we made that happen. That actually occurred during fiscal year 23, but this is the first year you'll see that actually reflected in the budget. And then a fiscal specialist position was reclassified to an accountant. Uh, and again, this, this goes back to the whole recruitment issue that we had in finance where we turned over, uh, most of the department. And planning, we've added a part-time plans examiner, although we've been unable to fill that position. Uh, this is to help with the backlog that we have, uh, downstairs reviewing, uh, building permits. So, uh, we're still doing all right with our times, not as fast as we were prior to the pandemic. Uh, we're looking for some help there, so we still have that position in the budget, although it's currently unfilled. We reclassed a building inspector one to a multidisciplinary inspector. That's an inspector that can go out and do commercial inspections as well, do code enforcement, has, uh, multiple certifications in that area. We reclassed a network engineer to an associate network engineer, which is a, a downgrade in a position. Uh, but that was, um, where the need was. And we reclassed the IT intern to a support specialist position. So we actually had someone that came in as an intern, uh, that was doing a fantastic job for us. And, um, we kind of almost used that as a, a pipeline into IT. Uh, so we reduced the expenditure from network engineer down to associate and we increased from intern up to IT support specialist. Uh, and that's how we were able to offset, uh, that expense. With police, we've added a new SRO. And so while on the expense side, it looks like we're paying the full amount. On the revenue side, uh, the school district will pay 80% for that particular, um, person. And parks, we reduced the number of municipal surface worker one positions by one. We were carrying an extra position in the budget, uh, due to some, um, due to two individuals that we had out for a while. Now that the, uh, the spots are filled, the original spots, we can go ahead and back that down by one. So we had to add a spot, uh, because the other two were occupied. So we had someone, uh, actually outworking. And then in recreation, we removed the inclusion coordinator position. That is a cooperative with three other cities. We're still participating in that. However, that individual is now housed at Webster Groves. Uh, after it turned over, we've kind of been taking turns with it. It's their turn, uh, so they hired the inclusion coordinator and we offset a portion of that cost.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the net of that is what change in?
An inclusion coordinator?
Everybody, what, what's the, the net impact?
Uh, I don't have the.
There's a lot of shifting of.
Yeah, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but it's something I can send out to you.
And what about positions, number of, number of staff?
The number of total positions? The only additional position in here, uh, is the SRO, which would be it's really offset by the decrease in the municipal service worker one. The others are just reclasses here, reclassifications.
Thanks.
But I can get the exact number to you. Good question. Okay, uh, and here is the operating budget all laid out in a summary. So this doesn't, this isn't an exact sheet, uh, that you'll find within the budget document, but it's easier to look at it this way, uh, at a summary level. So, uh, the top, we have revenue and operational transfers. So this is going to be your revenue. And then down below, we have expenditures and then your bottom line is your surplus or deficit, uh, for the fiscal years. On these columns, we have fiscal year 22. So this is an actual, this is where the budget year ended up. We have the 2023 adopted budget, so this is what we adopted a year ago now. Uh, the estimated, uh, is what we think we'll end up with at the end of the year. And then 2024 is the proposed budget, uh, that we're talking about this afternoon. Over here with the percentages, you'll see that, uh, this is 2024 proposed budget to the 23 estimated column here. So where we think we're going to end up, this column here is the 2024, uh, proposed budget versus the 2023 adopted budget column. And that's why the percentages are a little bit different. What we ended up seeing with 23 again, uh, was we saved, uh, about a million dollars on the expense side and we were about a million dollars to the good on the revenue side, uh, throughout the year. So we had anticipated that deficit number, uh, right here where it's $300,000 in the red, that that was going to be closer to 2.3 million. Uh, one of the things that really helped us is this interest income number. So we didn't know, uh, going into the year that interest rates were going to go up the way they did. Uh, that was a nice surprise to have. So you can see the, uh, the impact there was pretty significant, almost $400,000 in revenue. We've left that relatively flat going into the next year, but I just point that out as one of the big, uh, revenue increases. Uh, property taxes, we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, we were a little bit surprised to see it come in under the adopted budget number. Uh, Karen explained that it's, uh, due to how new construction is assessed. Uh, I know that we're going to send an email on that that explains it in a little more detail. But we do have with the new construction on the books, uh, an increase proposed, uh, for 2024, uh, up to $7.3 million. So those will be added completely to the assessed valuation and that's what we expect the impact to be. So that's about a 2% increase from budget year to budget year, 5% over where it actually came in to where we anticipate it will be at the end of 24. Sales tax, um, we, uh, we did really, really well here. You can see that, um, we had estimated we'd come in, uh, about 5.6 million. We're going to be about $200,000 over that on sales tax, which is great. Uh, we're anticipating that we're going to go up about another 4% over this estimated number and 2024 and about 7% up over the, uh, adopted budget that we had for 2023.
And some, some of that could be inflation related, but as we move forward and inflation comes down, it'll be more like the real deal. But is, is much of it thus far?
Yes, hoping that activity picks up. So if the comprehensive plan, when we were going through that data, it's really, really interesting, especially to look at place or data and see how many people are coming into the area because it's indicative of the activity that we're having. Uh, and their data was finding that office occupancy, that sort of thing, still at about 66% of pre-pandemic levels. Uh, hotel occupancy is, uh, largely back to where it was. Uh, restaurant visits are largely back to where they were. Uh, it's really those office visits where we still have a, a little bit of a lag there. So if we can get that number up as inflation rolls back, we still should see those year-over-year increases. But inflation's really helped to mask, uh, the fact that we're down probably about 40% of the regular office workers that were here.
David, I, I just trying to figure out how to make sense out of that page and some of the materials in our booklet.
Sure.
So on page 11 of the booklet, it looks like the summary revenue and expenditures general fund. Looks like i- it's got some of the same numbering of the same property tax, sales tax revenues and all that, but 2023 estimations are different. I, I'm trying to figure out what's, what is it? What am I looking at that's different on page 11 than what's on my screen? No, but up here is 7 million and 13,000.
So the, the difference on page 11 there is page 11 does not have a 2023 adopted budget?
That's what.
It has the 2023 estimated only.
That one column is.
Yeah, we're just showing where we believe it's going to end up. That's correct.
That's what I was trying to figure out. Why do my numbers look different than yours?
Yeah, that, that's exactly what it is. So those numbers, the, the numbers are the same. It's just the estimated column only, uh, where we believe we'll end up at the end of the year.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Oh, good question. Utility tax, uh, this is, uh, increasing as well. So we're up about $100,000, uh, over what we had anticipated for 2023. We expect that trend to continue, uh, and go up, up about another 3% in 2024. And that's driven by, uh, increases in utility costs. So you'll see that some of the providers in the area have been raising rates of which we get a portion. Uh, but then also the increased activity on those offices. We're, we're seeing it, it's slower than we would hope. Uh, but as more people are turning on lights and flushing toilets, that actually helps us on the revenue side. Uh, and we're seasonal as well. So, uh, hot summers like this, this next week here, when everybody's running air conditioning, that sort of thing, uh, helps us out. We did have a pretty cold winter, uh, which helped on heating costs as well.
Quick, quick question on that. So, uh, cell phones, none of that, we still haven't captured any of that.
We, we do get cellphone revenue.
We do get cellphone revenue.
Yes, so as, as that's increased over time, we've seen the landline number go down. So if you break down utilities, phones continue to fall off year over year on the landline side. Just about everyone has a cellphone now, so we don't see a whole lot of increase in that particular area. The only thing that's really dropping in the utility side, other than telephones, is the cable franchise fee. And that was part of the deal with the state and they allowed everybody to collect online sales tax. We had to roll back cable franchise fees, so we're continuing to do that, uh, in the coming year. Uh, but we're seeing some strength in utility tax, even given that, uh, cable rollback. Uh, in governmental revenue, uh, this here is, uh, money that comes to us for services we provide, like IT services, for, for instance. Uh, and so as those salaries increase with the compensation study, so does the revenue coming in from those other cities. So our expenses are going up, the revenue is going up accordingly, uh, because we're being reimbursed for those positions. This is also where the money comes in from the school district for SROs.
So David, for, when we increase our, um, salaries, so does that just automatically require our partnering cities to then pay us more?
That's correct.
So that's just part of our contractual relationship that it's?
It is.
If we raise salaries for the people, yeah.
And just with, uh, similar to the reclassification. So as we make those reclassifications, it impacts all three. So when those decisions are made, we're factoring in our service level, not just with Clayton, but with those other cities as well. Then that contract will be up for renegotiation next year, I believe, with both cities, August. So towards the tail end of fiscal year 24, we'll, we'll revisit everything with Brentwood and Richmond Heights again. I don't see it going away, but we'll definitely take a look at the way everything's structured. Uh, grants and donations, this one's, uh, relatively, uh, flat most years. You can see here's the big federal money that came in in 2022 and then it falls off. So you see a pretty big reduction there. Uh, we do have a few grants that we anticipate throughout the year, uh, so, uh, an increase there. Licenses and fees, this is where the big jump is that I talked about. So we do have some major projects that have been approved through the zoning process, uh, that, uh, we anticipate will get underway in fiscal year 24. That's the increase you're seeing, um, from 23 to 24. So significant there, uh, a, a nice, uh, nice addition for our revenue. Parks and Recreation, we continue to rebound in this area. So, uh, if you, uh, are familiar with the, the programming at all, especially in the youth area, our programs are packed, a ton of usage there, uh, memberships have come back, all of that. So we anticipate another 6% increase for Parks and Recreation revenue. Uh, for fines, we've seen this go up as well. So we weren't writing many, uh, tickets or violations. And of course, the, uh, uh, fines related to parking were down during the pandemic. Uh, they started to pick back up. So we had estimated our, when we, uh, adopted the budget, we were around 644,000. You could see the estimate is about $100,000 higher. We've got another 2% increase going into 2024 for that, uh, for 760,000 total. Uh, parking, uh, did substantially better this year. So again, indicative of more activity downtown, which is, which is good. Uh, so we, uh, adopted a budget with about 1.8 million. We anticipate that that's going to come in at 2.1 million, just under 2.2. Uh, so a really strong year in 2023. Uh, and then we actually backed that down, uh, just a little bit. And part of that has to do with the bottom garage, uh, leases there, uh, as that gets transitioned over. And I'm trying to remember what the other was at the moment. What's that? Oh, that's right, some of the construction rental fees. So as these big projects go online, they rent spaces over there, uh, they pay a rental fee, uh, but it's a little bit less than what you might collect, especially once you, um, incorporate the fines and things that go along with that. So, you know, if somebody takes up a parking space, they're paying that dollar 50. Um, if they don't pay it for whatever reason, that it turns into $20 and you start to see the, the bump there, the rentals don't really take that into account, but we're going to have quite a few, um, around the downtown area that are going to be, uh, subject to rentals. Interest income, uh, again, big increase here from 23, from where we thought we would be. Uh, we're, we're going to go ahead and say zero there. We don't know what's going to happen with rates. Uh, the Fed's kind of all over the place. That's the big question mark. Uh, we could see, um, reductions in 2024. They're talking about possibly rolling that back after one more slight increase. Uh, don't know what's going to happen or how that will, uh, actually play out. So we left it flat, um, unless somebody has a better crystal ball than us. But as we track that, it's, it's really hard to predict right now. Uh, miscellaneous, this is a very small number, as you can see, and, and consistent transfer from the special business district, so that tax that's collected downtown, this is a dedicated property tax. Uh, you can see the revenue that's transferred over. It's, uh, 494,000 in the proposed budget. Operational transfer from the capital improvement fund, uh, that is at 685,000. So, uh, again, we use that to pay for the maintenance of capital items that we have and then also salaries that are, uh, uh, for individuals that are working on capital projects. So those are eligible expenses as well.
What, um, why did we decrease the special business district fund so much? I mean, it's not that much, but.
I will have to pull that and look.
Because I mean, I think we were doing the same kind of events, you know, the same calendar.
Same events, the revenue overall didn't change a lot. Here we go, Karen's got it. I know we had talked about adding some money for the, um, CBD resurfacing, but we took that out for events. Go ahead.
There, excuse me, I'm so sorry. They voted to, um, use a portion of that money for capital-related items. I think, um, CBD possibly Parkion and those are budgeted in the capital improvement fund. So about $55,000 of that is going to the capital improvement fund and not to the general fund. So that's why it went down.
Okay, yeah, I was at that meeting. I can't, I, I, that didn't ring, ring a bell, but yeah, that's.
No, you're, I, I think she's absolutely right. It's the Parkions. So the money that was in there for the central, the central business district resurfacing project, that's what was removed. So we took that money and held it back for promotional type items. There was still 55,000 in there or around that amount for Parkions. So if you want a complete breakdown, we can send that out to you.
Yeah, um, all right, you were at that meeting too. Do you remember this? Do you remember this? I was thinking that we decided that the special business district fund shouldn't have to pay for, pay, you know, hardscape.
And that's when we took out the, the central business district resurfacing project. But the Parkion money was left in there.
Okay, all right.
The Parkions are actually paid for out of the earth. So that money would be transferred to the earth instead of to the general fund. And that's the reduction that you see there. But we will send out that, we'll, we'll send out the details so you have it. Thank you for that, Karen. All right, any questions on the revenue side? As you can see, uh, total where we end up, again, we, we were, uh, definitely stronger than we thought we would be in 2023. And then we, uh, have a, uh, 6% increase over the estimated amount for 2024. About 9% year-over-year from the adopted budget to adopted budget. Strong growth, it's good to see. Right, if not, uh, we'll talk about expenditures here in the general fund. Uh, legislative, uh, remaining relatively flat. We had some savings this year. Uh, we always budget for full conferences and, and things of that nature. Uh, and if we don't use them all, then we've got some savings, which was the case, uh, in 2024, uh, or 2023, I apologize. Uh, so you can see we've got, uh, about a 1% increase year-over-year to the budgeted amount, uh, in legislative. On the administrative side, uh, we've got a 7% increase budget year to budget year, 14% over the estimated amount. The reason that estimated amount is, uh, lower than we anticipated, uh, for 2023 is due to turnover, especially in the HR area. So we had, uh, positions that were open for, uh, a portion of the year with quite a bit of savings there. Uh, we also had, um, not expended as much in legal fees as we had anticipated. So, uh, negotiations, for example, went much quicker and smoother, uh, than, uh, you know, we did, was, we weren't sure what to budget there. So we had, uh, quite a big, uh, uh, anticipated legal fee there that, that won't materialize. So we have savings in that area as well. Uh, so administration, uh, good year on the savings. And then, uh, the increase that you're seeing, uh, going into next year is largely just due to salary increases. And so, um, that's where that 7% number comes from. Planning and development, uh, this one, uh, the numbers jump around quite a bit. It looks like we have a lot of savings there. We did have, um, maybe one position turnover in 2023, if I recall, um, two. And then, uh, the comp plan's the big portion of the savings there. So we didn't get too far into the comp plan within fiscal year 2023. So a lot of those expenses are rolling over into 2024, uh, and then the salary increases as well. Going to bring their total amount to about 1.3 million dollars. On the police side, we have a, uh, 12% increase that is, uh, proposed budget to the estimated from last year, uh, 10% from budget to budget. And, uh, the reasons for that are the new SRO position. So there's another, uh, body in there. The increases at ECDC or East Central Dispatch, uh, so we had a, uh, an increase in that area as well. Uh, that was about a $40,000 increase. And then we had a slight increase to training. Uh, we had a training. Uh, we had a training increase in fire as well. So a lot of the programs that were shut down during the pandemic that were hands on in person. We had, we, we had a lot of savings because those weren't happening. Those are back online, especially on the fire side. There's a lot of hands on training that that we need that we haven't gotten for the last couple of years. So those are going back into the budget uh for twenty four, and it shows a little bit of an increase there. Uh, fire all overall, though, it's five percent uh from twenty twenty four to estimated twenty three, and then six percent from budget to budget. Uh, again, that's a little bit of training, uh but then the salary increases uh for our firefighters. And public works, it looks like we've got a massive decrease, and that's because of waste collection. And so that's what's driving that number, and that's why it looks out of whack. Uh, we also, like I said, have savings on, on salt. Uh, no changes at all in positions there, and then we have the uh, the salary increases. And parks and recreation, uh we're relatively flat. If you compare budget to budget, we're nine percent over the estimated amount. Uh, we did have the reduction of that one municipal service worker, one position, so that will look, show up as some savings there. And then some slight reductions in operation costs and also uh costs related to the tennis center. And then uh insurance, you can, we did get an increase there, about twenty percent uh property casualty, those types of lines uh year over year. So that's how the expenditure side played out. If you go through and you start to look at uh the departmental detail. There's really not a whole lot of change or fluctuation within those departments on contractual services or commodities. Uh, everybody did a really good job of trying to keep those things flat. The focus was on compensation this year, and that's where you're seeing the increases. So uh no surprise in that area as well. All said and done, uh, we anticipate a surplus of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars by year end. Again, uh, we are really, really conservative here. Uh, I shouldn't say really, really conservative, but definitely conservative on the revenue side. And then on the expense side, we are budgeting as if uh every position will be filled and we're gonna spend every dollar, and we know every year that we're gonna realize some savings. So while it says six hundred and fifty thousand there, I would anticipate that that number's probably gonna be a little bit higher. Uh, which is a good thing because uh the, as, as we discussed uh before, and we've talked about quite a bit. If you look at the um, the increases over here, this is great in the short term on the revenue side. Um, seeing these six and nine numbers, if you pull out the waste collection reductions, though. Uh, these expense numbers are going to outpace and are outpacing the revenue increases. So we're gonna get back to that situation where you're gonna see that surplus year over year start to diminish, and then eventually we'll get in that spot again. Uh, where we're gonna cross up and expenditures are gonna outpace your revenues. So uh, we don't anticipate that happening for. Four, five years, maybe more. Uh, the nice thing is you're running a surplus in the meantime that you can draw on the backside of that. So we're, we're some time before we're gonna be drawing down a fund balance.
Um, David, how much or how do you decide how much money to transfer in from the capital fund? Like what, you know, is it kind of just looking at the different ways that we can use that money in the general?
I know that.
So it's all just related to how much time we have to spend taking care of capital projects and just.
Yeah, they do an analysis and finance every year and look at those operational expenditures, again, that that relate to capital. Uh, and then start to just tally those up. And so at the end of the year, that's, that's why you see some fluctuation there. Uh, this year's a little more than most. Um, I don't know if that's. I, I, I don't know the exact. Maintenance side, and that might be attributed to, but. I'm sorry, Karen.
It's a little more because this associated salaries went up a little bit.
You think it's on the, okay, so it's on the personnel side more than the maintenance side? Okay. Great. Yeah, that was an easy explanation. Thank you.
But the, but the idea eventually is to. Stop that if possible, so that we can leave more money in our capital.
Free up money in the, the capital fund, and we could do that. But as you could see, if, if we did that, we'd be balanced or a little bit of a deficit again.
Right.
On the operating side.
Yeah.
So David, if there's a. Presipated. Six hundred thousand dollar surplus, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
This budget for twenty twenty four or twenty twenty three?
For twenty twenty four. So at the year end of twenty twenty three, we anticipate that we had about a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. Yeah, so that'll be drawn from the fund balance, and then for twenty twenty four, we're gonna add about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in.
When you say that the trend over the next five years is gonna show a steady decrease in that surplus.
Correct. That surplus will start to diminish.
And at some point, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be into a deficit again, is that?
Correct. That is the track we're on. And so again, if, if you look at these numbers here, if you just look at the raw number, you see that. You know, six and nine percent on the revenue side are higher than three and negative one on the expense side. But when you take out the two million dollars in savings from waste collection, the expenses are actually outpacing the, the revenue still with the uh, the rate of change.
Right. So two questions. One is, I will have, I will have friends of mine, uh residents who will say. You just took our garbage away from us and we're making us pay ourselves, and you've got a six hundred thousand dollar surplus coming up in twenty twenty four. All right. What do I say? I mean, I understand your point. I understand what you're saying, but I don't, I don't know that John, you know, John Public understands what you're saying.
So had we continued to provide waste collection, we know that our bill would have gone up from what we previously paid. So let's say that we would have paid two point five million dollars in waste collection services. If you add that two point five million dollars onto the expense side. And you look down below, that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in black would be a red one point nine.
I need the elevator speech.
Well, that's, that's it. I mean, if, if we, if, if we continue to pay for trash, where we show a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus, we'd be showing about a one point nine million dollar deficit.
I mean, the, it's just, you know, six fifty isn't two million.
No, I know.
You know, so we had to save two million in order to come clean, and so we had a little bit left over this year, but you know. It's pretty near.
And the fund balance would have been in emergency mode in two years rather than in four or five years, so.
Right.
So that's, that's where we were heading off, is we know, we knew we were gonna take a big hit there, and I think this kind of. That this shows how big a hit that would have been.
So my second question is, though, how do we avoid Armageddon in five years?
So what I think we do is we, we bank this surplus in the meantime, and then we can draw that on the back end. So if it's gonna think.
So how long will that last?
Well, let's look at the fund balance, which is coming up next. So uh, here's our fund balance, our, our reserves. So this is the unassigned fund balance here. So this uh. Is always about, and you can see these numbers here, this is always about a fifteen percent difference between unassigned uh and the assigned fund balance. The unassigned uh is um, the fund balance at year end, like it says here, as a percentage of annual expenditures. Uh, this is a little bit uh different in that uh it takes out items like outstanding purchase orders, prepaid items and other commitments. Um, so anyhow, uh sixty two percent is what we anticipate uh at the end of fiscal year twenty four. We anticipate another surplus in fiscal year twenty five and probably another surplus in fiscal year twenty six. So this number is gonna continue to go up, not at the same rate, because we're gonna start to see that surplus diminish a little bit. Uh, but that number will get higher, and that's kind of your cushion to draw on the backside, and you probably have. Five years or so until you're back to that number that you're at right now. That's sixty two percent number, and it's sixty two percent. You still have another twelve percent to draw before uh you're even at your fifty percent fund balance target. So we've, we've got. Got time here to work through it, right? Um, and the big question is what happens with the activity downtown? What happens with the offices that have forty percent vacancy? So while they're all leased, we still know those, those folks aren't here. Uh, that's kind of. That's a huge question mark for us.
There are bigger question mark about the, the vacancy. When it comes to the possible valuations also going down and the property tax issues?
I think as long as those buildings are leased, then we don't have an issue. So whether people are showing up or not, I don't think that impacts their valuations. I think if their leases start to fall off and those floors just start to go dark and have. Uh, no lease assigned to them, then you may start to see that uh be impacted. Now, when that happens and how much time's left on those leases, I, I couldn't tell you.
It's gonna be, it's gonna vary from building to building.
It is.
And some might even be coming up now.
Right, and it's very hard to predict, but I would imagine as these renewals come up, if, if we still have forty percent of the people that aren't working in downtown Clayton, then we're gonna see some of those. Uh, some of those leases potentially go away, or if you have five floors right now, maybe you go back and, and, and roll it down to three. Right. So we are gonna have vacancy. We know what's gonna happen, and uh there's been a lot of uh press about the flight to quality here in Clayton, where everybody's going to do these class A buildings, and. There's a lot of movement within Clayton from B buildings to A buildings and A buildings to other newer A buildings. And in the end, you're gonna see this shuffle continue, and we're probably gonna be left with a, a handful of buildings that are. Uh, B or C buildings that have very low occupancy rates that probably turn into your next redevelopment opportunities.
Right.
And that's gonna take some time to play out. Uh, but we've, we've, we've got some cushion here. As long as we sit on that surplus and we let that pile up a little bit, we can draw it on the backside, and I, I think we've got. You know, six or seven years to, to see how things go before we have to have a revenue conversation.
I think that's, that's, that's good. You know, there, there are also just some uh external pressures that we might face from the state of Missouri. Who, you know, the, that we are always facing potential cuts in property tax revenue streams, uh freezes for seniors. Um, cuts in sales tax, um elimination of sales taxes, growing down of cable franchise. I mean, there are a lot of things that. Keep coming up that, you know, could eventually also impact our revenue stream. So it's, it's really good to have a really healthy surplus that we, that are really healthy fund. Reserve fund that we have, yeah.
Did we get any Rams money? Was it, was it county?
No, no, county kept it all.
County kept it all. That, that was nice of them.
And then here's the general fund balance projection, and again, this is your unassigned uh fund balance. This is your uh fund balance without those amounts taken out. Uh, you can see it was at eighty six percent in twenty twenty two. And then uh seventy nine percent because we ran that deficit in fiscal year twenty three. And then uh staying right at seventy nine percent with waste collection coming out, that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus that we have. But again, this is a, an amount that's as a percentage of expenditures. So as expenditures go up, uh that's what actually flattened that out in a year where you, you save money. But strong reserves here. I mean, we're, we're in a good reserve position, and we're not deficit spending anymore. So your. Reserves stay intact, and they're actually gonna grow, which is good. Any questions about general fund? Any other questions? As you look through the, 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 the budget book a little bit more, if you have any other questions, then feel free to send those along um. In advance of the public hearing that we'll have on uh September twelfth. The sewer lateral fund, uh everyone, I think, is familiar with this program. So this is an annual assessment. Um, that's made and collected when you uh pay your real estate taxes. So property owners with six or fewer units, they pay twenty eight dollars a year. That all gets in, uh put into one pot, and then if you have your sewer lateral uh collapse on your property, then you can contact the city. We'll work with you in that program, and we'll reimburse up to two thousand dollars of the replacement for the sewer lateral. There was a change that was made a few years back. Uh, this amount used to be higher, and we actually used to run a deficit where the expenditures exceeded the revenue. At that point in time, the decision was made to roll that reimbursement amount down or back to two thousand dollars. You can see that we've actually run a surplus now. Uh, we anticipate that to happen again in twenty twenty four. So we're building up the reserve again in the, the sewer lateral fund, uh after that had been depleted in previous years when that number was at three thousand dollars. So if we build that surplus up, uh we should have another conversation again about what we want that benefit level to be, or that reimbursement level. Special Business District, um, again, this is the property tax levy. That we have in downtown. This is for marking, marketing and events, uh and also improvements that benefit the downtown area. The Economic Development Advisory uh Committee gets together and, and talks about how these funds should be utilized. The revenue that's collected goes to the general fund and then also to the capital improvement fund for uh economic development support. And also can be used for, for capital items, uh as is the case with, with the Parkyons like we talked about. Uh, we will be talking about events and the discussion session on September uh twelfth. Gary Carter's gonna go over that. And uh, or I'm sorry, um, coming up next Tuesday. And so we're gonna talk about events and, and see whether or not we wanna add an event or so. Uh, but this, these, this is how we fund our events, and you can see here that uh. We, we intend to spend everything that comes in every year uh through the special business district. Equipment replacement fund, this one fluctuates quite a bit year to year. Uh, this is our, our savings fund, so to speak, where we put money in every year uh for. Capital items that we know we're gonna buy, and uh when the time comes, the money's there, and we don't have to appropriate. Money in chunks every year and kind of get surprised by expenditures that are coming up. We plan for expenditures we know are coming and replacement of items. So. Uh, there are criteria for inclusion in the equipment replacement fund. Uh, it has to exceed twenty thousand dollars in costs and have a life expectancy greater than two years. We do have some items over twenty thousand dollars that are funded from the general fund, like capital fund items over twenty five thousand with five years of benefit. Uh, that's uh when the expense comes from there. So on the general fund, uh we do have that capital outlay line that you'll see in some of those department budgets, and that's exactly what that is. Uh, you can see the number of items that we'll have here in twenty twenty four that are coming due. We've got twenty twenty, uh, we have twenty two items. Uh, that are vehicle and motorized fleet, seven software items, six facility components, thirty five total purchases being made at one point nine million dollars, just under two million. The big jump will come in twenty twenty five. This is when the fire trucks that we've ordered will actually be, uh, we'll get the invoice and they'll be delivered. So you can see that increase quite a bit from the normal amount. Usually, we're right around one point three million or so. Uh, those fire trucks are three million dollars for both. And so you can see that the big expense there. But the good news is, we've saved board over time, and uh we, we're, we're prepared to spend it, and uh. I think we did the, the right thing by ordering the trucks when we did, because the prices have gone up since we placed that order. Uh, here again, you can see the, the fund balance that we carry quite a bit in the equipment replacement fund. So uh, we know that over time, this money's gonna be spent down. The annual revenue that's coming in to the equipment replacement fund, other financing sources, so there is some um uh money that comes in from. Uh, the capital fund, also from uh bond issues, those types of things that are out there. Uh, all said, you can see two point five million dollars in twenty twenty one, uh two point five million roughly in twenty twenty four. So not a lot of fluctuation on the revenue side. Expenditures are gonna fluctuate every year depending on what we buy, but what you really need to look at here is that bottom line. You can see that we've got quite a bit of money in there at nine point five million dollars. So we are uh well funded for those purchases will be coming up in the future. Five-year C I P, uh, there's some numbers on here. We're gonna go through the C I P in a little more detail in just a minute. Uh, so I'll save that slide, but I will save, or, or I will talk about this now, which is the uh, the pie chart we put together with the expenditures from the capital fund. The big green one this year uh is the design for the municipal garage, so that's a million dollar project. Uh, we expect that to happen during fiscal year twenty twenty four. We're actually about to start a needs assessment here over the next month or so. Uh, that will guide us through or at least set us up for the design process, which is good. Uh, micro surfacing, we've got a lot of that going on the coming year. You can see that in this area, parks and recreation. Uh, we do have quite a few parks projects. Some of those will be offset by a grant. Uh, which is nice, uh, but the parks master, the livable communities master plan, which is a parks capital item. That's gonna be largely funded out of fiscal year twenty twenty four, because we haven't gotten very far in that plan during fiscal year twenty three. So that's showing up in this uh teal color as well. Uh, professional services is a small slice, street resurfacing, so that central business district project uh shows up in this area. Uh, street lighting, we do have some street lighting projects that will uh pay down the rest of those uh road construction funds that we had. So the bond funding from twenty fourteen that was issued. Uh, we are finally going to deplete all of that during fiscal year twenty four, and uh I'll show those projects in a minute. And then alleys, curbs and sidewalks. So that's how the capital fund breaks down for fiscal year twenty four.
Question.
Yes.
So how do we go about um analyzing whether or not any of the federal programs like the um Inflation Reduction Act? Which is being touted now is not really inflation reducing, but providing funds for um energy savings and all dif, you know, different kinds of things. And I, I don't know how, do we, do we um? Take a look at everything. I'm sure we do look at it, but how do we go about understanding that? And what lengths do we go to to figure out if there's anything in those grant, in those programs that we can take advantage of?
Yeah, so we, we definitely review that. A lot of those federal grants that pop up, they come at you pretty quickly, and a lot of these projects have to be pretty far advanced before you can actually apply for those. Uh, the elect, or the E V chargers that are actually on this screen here is a great example of a grant where we're gonna take advantage of that. Um, we have uh Alex Elmstead and, you know, the, the twenty five percent of his time, and that's what we've been doing. Um, and the E V chargers is, is a grant that he actually put that grant together for us, and um, we're hoping we're successful there getting that. Uh, but we do monitor that, and if we have a project that's ready to go, that's grant eligible, then we'll definitely apply. These big resurfacing projects that you see here, we're going through the traditional federal grants for those. Uh, so anytime there's an offset or there's something that's eligible, then we're gonna try to capture it. So here's a list of the uh projects in the cap. So here's the list of the, uh, projects in the capital fund for this year. We have some improvements at ten South Brentwood, uh, that need to be completed on that building. That's the police building. Uh, the bike pedestrian master plan, uh, that number is actually going to be a little bit higher than that on this list. Uh, I don't think that's the updated number. Redjust, what's that? Across twenty-three. Yeah, I, I expect, oh, I thought the twenty-four number would be higher. Okay. Yeah, sorry. Uh, resurfacing project phase one, uh, you can see we have two hundred and eighty-four thousand there, resurfacing project phase two, one point five million. Again, these are offset with federal dollars. Uh, there's the parks master plan again, where we got the bike pad and park split. There's the twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, sidewalks and curbs. We've got the sidewalk project that we do every year at a hundred thousand dollars, lighting upgrades in Shaw Park. The renovation design for the municipal garage is in here. Uh, we also have some construction money down below. So a total of one point two five million. For the municipal garage, uh, Shaw Park tennis lighting, uh, got that budgeted. The roof at number one Oaknall Park, which is part of the lease requirement that we have for the tenant there, that's five hundred thousand dollars to replace that. We have garage security at the police building as well. Uh, so this is, uh, where the gate arms are at, at the entrances there. Anybody can walk. And off the street, uh, into our garages there. Uh, so this is going to make that more secure, uh, at the police building. Uh, number one Oaknall, uh, Park Foundation repairs. We've got, uh, some repairs on that building where we're doing the roof as well. Uh, that's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Shaw Park fields, one and two, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to redo those fields. But that's going to be offset through the municipal park grant, uh, which is good. Uh, municipal garage, uh, renovation construction, like I said, is a million. Here's that EV charger project at four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And we're hoping seventy-five percent or so of that is offset by the federal dollars, which is great. Um, the HVAC replacement at the aquatic center, seventy-five thousand. There's a retaining wall right over here on Maryland that's, um, needing to be repaired. So that's in the budget. Uh, that's a forty-eight thousand dollar repair.
Add that, Matt, that's forty-eight thousand dollars? Oh my god.
Yes.
Hope Mr. Oates appreciates, uh, yeah.
Yes. Then we have a diesel exhaust system for the fire department. So this, uh, reduces the diesel particulates, uh, that are, uh, put out by those vehicles. When they're in the engine bay. Uh, so we are going to get the engine bay scrubbed and repainted. Uh, and that's a, a big project for us to get those particulates out of there because they are carcinogens. And, uh, this particular system here, again, they, they'll attach to the, uh, exhaust on the ambulance and also on the fire trucks. And they're basically scrubbers, uh, that will keep those particulates from, uh, going around the engine bay. The central business district resurfacing, uh, phase one, there's another seventy-nine thousand dollars, uh, for that project. And here's the street lighting replacement, um, that we have scheduled for this year, which is High Point to Munn and then also Wydown Forest. So nice to get those underway. And we still have the larger lighting project that needs to be done at some point in the city. Uh, but you can see lighting is extremely expensive. This is just two neighborhoods right here and it costs two million dollars. So debt service, these are the outstanding issues that we have. Uh, these will, uh, be paid off in twenty thirty-two and, and in twenty thirty-four. Uh, we've got the twenty nineteen, uh, refunding that we did where we saved, uh, we refinanced the perfect time, uh, with interest rates low. Uh, this is for the police facility and then, uh, also a center renovation. The twenty twenty-one, uh, refunding that we had, again, uh, big savings there for us. This was the renovation at the police headquarters. And then parks and street improvements. And then, uh, this is the big one that we're about to, uh, finally use all the funds from. This was actually originally issued in twenty, uh, fourteen. This is for street and alley resurfacing and also street lighting. So all of that money's actually been spent. So those renovations are all done. We're just paying that back now. But those were for. Like it says here, the, the center renovations, uh, and then we refinanced some, some bonds that were out there for the purchase of the police building. And that same debt issue there. It is, but it's dedicated directly to that. It can only go to that. Make those payments.
To the payments for those.
So it's actually, it's split here. So you got a property tax levy that goes for the police building. So that was a refinancing of those outstanding bonds. And then Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax goes to pay for the, the center renovation portion of that payment.
Where's the, that revenue go?
So the renovation's done and.
That revenue comes in.
No, we, we've already taken it in.
It's, there's no more revenue coming in.
There's no more revenue coming in. We're just paying it down at this point. Yeah. So you can see the, uh, here's the outstanding bond issues by date. So in twenty nineteen, when we refinanced. This was our balance at that time, twelve point four million dollars. This is what's left as of, uh, this year, and you can see it'll be paid off in twenty thirty-two. Uh, the twenty twenty-one special obligation refunding, uh, when we did the refinancing, the refinancing, there was five million dollars left on that balance. Uh, we've paid off four hundred thousand dollars of that. You can see it, uh, matures in twenty thirty-two. And then finally, those road construction, uh, bonds, this was a general obligation. So this is a dedicated property tax that goes to paying these bonds back. Uh, that was at ten point one million when it was refinanced, nine point five six remaining. That goes off the books in twenty thirty-four.
What was this? So what's the stormwater, uh, thing, isn't it?
Well, it's called a Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax, but when it was passed in the city of Clayton, our voters dedicated one hundred percent of what's collected to go to parks. So while it's called a Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax, when it was approved by our voters, there was no stormwater component to it.
Okay. And that you're saying that.
That's, that's just what the state legislature called it when it passed it.
That tax, uh, is, is sunsetted, it's done?
No, that, that tax we, we actually received. So a portion goes to the capital fund to pay for parks uses. And a portion of that money that comes in goes to pay down this debt.
How much goes to, to the, to the park usage right now? You know, so how much of that goes to the park usage?
Uh, I can pull it up on our, I'll pull it up with the CIP in just a minute. So we'll look at all the revenues there. You can see how it breaks down. Yeah.
And you know, so in twenty thirty-two, then we have that. That revenue just come in and be available.
Right.
Yeah.
And twenty thirty-two and, and twenty thirty-four, uh, as those go off the books, then yes, that money will be available. Um, the way this typically works though, is when you use something, uh, like this in twenty fourteen, when we issued general obligation money to go and. And resurface a bunch of streets in the city, those streets come due again. And so when that happens, this one tends to be cyclical.
That's gonna be.
Right. You may have some time before you need to do another center renovation or big renovation like that, but, uh. When you borrow for streets, it's typically going to come back. Uh, here's the repayment. So you can see that a, here's the total debt payment that we make every year. And then you can see how that's, that's broken down, where that, that funding comes from. So we have some dedicated property taxes. So the general obligation for the streets. And then also the money that goes towards the police building, uh, that's dedicated money that has to go to those purposes. So, uh, twenty twenty-four. It's about one point nine million dollars in property taxes collected that will go to pay those. Four hundred and ninety-three thousand is from that Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax to go to pay for that issue. And then another five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that comes out of the capital improvement fund. That's how we make our debt payments. And then you can see what's attributed to each, uh, individual, uh, debt issue there. So as you said, when they go off the books, as soon as this one stops. Um, you can see that's, that's nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars you're not paying, uh, for that particular. Issue. You've got five hundred thousand dollars here, another five ninety on that one. So I mean, these are, these are big ticket items. Lot of, lot of. Lot of debt service there. All right. And then the approval schedule for this year, September twelfth, we're going to have the public hearing and first reading for the property tax levy and then also the operating budget. We'll have the CRSWC budget on there as well. And then September twenty-sixth, we'll have the, uh, second reading and final approval for the budget and the tax levy. And then October one is the beginning of the fiscal year. So any questions about any of that before we talk about the capital fund? The general fund questions? Think of anything else, let us know. What I have here, uh, is the overall, uh, dollar amount change in personnel, uh, related to those reclassifications. And then I'll give you a special business district breakdown as well. And that'll be helpful going into that event discussion. All right, let me, uh.
I have one, I have one question, David.
Sure, absolutely.
Is there, is, is there some place where there is an overall evaluation of. Of, of, of our need, of our personnel needs? There's somewhere in terms of the, it is the, is the, have we looked at at some point? You know, and I'm not saying to, to lay anyone off, but I'm saying, but you know, perhaps by way of just if somebody leaves. Do we have to replace? You know, you, you talked about that earlier in the bu- budget discussion where you, you said, hey. We've saved some money because somebody leaves and then we have an open spot, you know? Is there some way to evaluate, okay, we had an open spot for, well, three months. Maybe we didn't need to fill it. Did we need to fill it? There's some evaluation that we've done, even by way of an outside evalu, uh, uh, consulting or some way of, of knowing.
There's, there hasn't been any third party evaluation. Now, when we have openings, we, we do talk about what we're going to do with that spot. So we don't automatically fill it with the same thing. I think the fact that we had six or seven reclassifications in this particular budget shows that. We continue to analyze these positions as we have openings to try to right-size everything.
And that, but I just wondered.
But we, we've not had an outside analysis on.
On the big picture.
On staffing levels.
Staff, uh, staffing and what, what we really need to run the city.
We, we look at our needs and, uh, we just do our internal evaluation on, on how to best.
Is it possible we could benefit from something like that?
Potentially. I'm trying to think of who would do that study. Uh, they would have to understand your organization pretty well to get in there and, and say, this is what you should need to do that function. Um, it's something we could look into. I'm not familiar with a study like that on the local government side, but there may be. Some consultant out there that may be able to do something like that.
I'm, I'm just thinking aloud. I, I, I don't know. I don't know if it would help either. It just sort of might be a good idea.
Well, we're next, uh, soon, we're going to the MML conference, Missouri Municipal League, and we'll see a lot of people. We can ask around, see if anybody has done anything like that in their city and how beneficial it was. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think David is right. We, they'd have to really intimately know what we, what we have to do. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, okay. You didn't know the city before you were hired, so.
No, and that's, but if you look back in time, and if, and if, but, but if you look back in time, you know, the, as I said. Reclassifications are usually indicative that, you know, you're, you're, you're right sizing things along the way. And you can see that over the years. Uh, the last three and a half years of whatever I've been here, those have kind of picked up as we've started to understand better what our needs are.
We talked about.
Takes, takes time to figure it out.
Revenue side. And of course, we always should look at the expenditure side and see where we could, you know, work something better.
Yeah. And, and, you know, personnel is seventy-one percent of that, those general fund expenditures. So when you look at. The contractual services commodities, there's, there's nothing to cut there. Uh, if there was, we would have done it during the pandemic and it wouldn't have come back and. Yeah, there's just not a lot of room there. So it's really on the personnel side. And, uh, as far as compensation, I think we've got that. You know, dialed in or, or where it should be at this point. Uh, then it comes down to, to staffing levels if you're going to make any adjustment. And, um, yeah. You can talk about how we might analyze that. Great.
Somewhat related question. Uh, we're also, you know, we're, we're a small city and we don't have economies of scale. Are there? And we've done a lot of, you've looked at a lot of partnerships that we do do with neighboring municipalities. Is there anything else that is being considered right now?
Not, not formally. I, there are conversations that managers will have some, from time to time. I know that department heads will have conversations with. Other departments and other cities and, and talk about how we might be able to, to help each other out, but there's nothing in motion at the moment for anything. Dispatch and IT are the two that we continue to, to partner on. And then the inclusion coordinator is another example of that. Any other questions on general fund? All right. Well, let's talk capital fund. And I have two scenarios for you today. Um, and the reason we're doing that is. Uh, you'll see our fund balance over time in the capital fund, uh, again, starts to diminish as we do some of these projects. So the way we've been looking at it over the last. A couple of years is, is reflected on this chart here. And you can see that when we get to fiscal year twenty-eight. We're at one point six million dollars in our fund balance and about one point five million dollars is our fund balance target for capital. So we're really down, uh, to, to nothing there. Uh, once you add the projects in, once you add in the debt for the municipal garage. There's not a lot, lot left over. Uh, so as we, we looked at this and we talked about the municipal garage last time, we had talked about. Uh, drawing down on the fund balance, about two and a half million dollars. And, uh, putting that towards the municipal garage. So we didn't have to finance as much. The impact of doing that though, is, uh, when you get out to fiscal year twenty-eight here, you really don't have a lot of money left over. Uh, there really isn't any room at all. This is concerning because with the Parks Master Plan going on right now, if their projects are identified through that effort. Or anything else comes up between, uh, fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-eight, it's going to be difficult to do any projects. Uh, if we proceed down this path. So my recommendation at this point in time would be to finance the entire municipal garage project. Uh, we have a triple A rating. Interest rates are higher than we would hope. Uh, but still with that triple A rating, we would anticipate they'd be about four percent. Uh, so a four percent issue over twenty years, uh, for that particular project. So four percent's higher than what we paid in the past. Definitely way. Less than what consumers are paying at this point in time. But by doing that and not drawing two and a half million dollars out of your fund balance. You can see that we've got some cushion here, uh, of about two million dollars, uh, looking out into the future. So that if something's identified through that. Uh, plan that we wanted to do, we have some money there for it. Uh, it, you know, depending on what happens with the commons, if for some reason donations didn't materialize there. And we needed to address that particular spot in Shaw Park. Got to imagine that any improvement that might go in is going to cost a million to two million dollars, uh, in that particular area. So. If we want to keep some money on hand to do something like that without reaching into the general fund reserves. Then it would probably be wise at this point with the municipal garage to finance the entire project.
What's the total cost again?
For the municipal garage? It's about a twelve million dollar project now, twelve to twelve-five. So construction costs have gone up.
Right.
So the original thought was let's, let's draw two point five million and then we'll, we'll borrow ten million, we'll borrow the balance. Um, that two point five million dollars though makes, makes quite a difference to the bottom line out over time. So this is just a snapshot, just so everyone knows, uh, we've got our, our revenue here. You can see our ongoing revenue. Uh, and then we have some project related revenue and what that really is, or, or grants, uh, that come in for projects. So, uh, for instance, the CBD resurfacings, like I said, have some pretty sub. Substantial federal dollars that come in for that. Uh, also the EV charging project and the, uh, Shaw Park fields, that's all included in there in the one point two six million dollars. So there's some fluctuation there and probably some grant opportunities out here in the future, uh, to save some money on some projects, although we don't know. Uh, exactly what those are going to be at this point in time. And then, uh, no transfers in, uh, beyond twenty twenty-four that we can envision at this point in time. That fifty-seven thousand, is that the Parkeon money perhaps? It's coming in from the business district, special business district, I believe. Um, and then we have transfers in debt down below. Uh, you can see in fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, four point six million dollars. So that's these six hundred and change that goes to the general fund. Plus the debt service that we have every year. Uh, and then here's the actual project expenditures. A bigger amount in twenty twenty-four because again, we've got some big projects, uh, that are going on this year. And then in the future, we're pretty modest with the projects that we have. So one point one million, uh, ranging up to two point two million in fiscal year twenty-eight. Uh, so when we look at this, you know, we've got a little bit of a surplus in some of these years, but, uh, all in all, uh. We're doing as much as we can within the capital fund. We go down.
So the, the, uh.
Here it is.
The twelve million is, is a renovation, not a tear down and redo.
It's a renovation and addition.
And addition.
A tear down and redo would be.
I guess you've figured out that that would be.
It's in the twenty-five to thirty million range maybe?
And.
Twenty? Okay. I've talked to another city that's doing, I think, twenty-six to, I think they're twenty-six million right now, uh, Public Works Garage.
And this is an area where I've asked this before, but I'll just ask it out loud, just in case, you know. I mean, this is where I've, I've wondered if we couldn't partner with another city. We're adjacent to so many cities. And I know that Brentwood just is embarking on a new public works facility of some sort. Um, they're not right next door, I understand, but. You know, it just seems like with all this, the big, the big facility to have all this salt and all this other stuff. It just seems so crazy that each city has to have their own spot. And I know it's the vehicles, it's partly it. You know, get the store or vehicles, which are very valuable. But have we really, have, have we scoured the earth on that?
So vehicle storage would be one, mechanic space would be the other.
Yeah.
Uh, so the met, the surrounding cities have single mechanic bays. Um, you know, Maplewood's facilities dated Richmond Heights is fairly small. I'm not sure what Brentwood has at this point. Uh. Salt Dome, you've got to have, you know, the, the capacity that we have. Um, it's a tough one. The thing that takes up the most room is just storage. Uh, so replacement streetlights, replacement trash cans, there's, uh, you know, we got a sign. Uh, so replacement streetlights, replacement trashcans, there's, uh, you know, we've got a sign shop, we've got all kinds of stuff over there.
We can get rid of the snowflakes that might save some space.
There you go.
Yeah.
So we can talk to those other cities and see what kind of opportunity, but Richmond Heights facility is. Pretty small there. It's just down the street from.
Just share ours and help pay for it. You know what I'm saying? I know you know what I'm saying. So I don't know. If, if we've, if we've really turned over all the rocks on that, that's fine, but I just can't help myself from asking it one more time. Or like our salt dome, you know, sharing our salt dome with Maplewood and Richmond Heights, so they don't have the need for their own salt dome. You know, I don't know, but yeah, I mean, I agree, like finding a way to partner for part of it or some sort of, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk with.
It's an idea.
Yeah, we can, we can talk with them. Let's see. Um, no, that's totally fine. All right. So on the revenue side, this is a further breakdown of what you see here. And so we were talking about tax revenue and how that comes in. So we have the capital improvement sales tax. And you can see that that revenue is about one point five million dollars. We have the parks and stormwater sales tax, one point four million dollars, and this is a dedicated sales tax. So that can only be, only be used for parks purposes. So again, we use that for some parks projects. But also to make, uh, debt service payments, uh, on the parks bond issue. We have the use tax that comes in, one point four million dollars. So we've seen some strength there in the use tax, which is great. Uh, railroad and other utilities, that's a fairly low amount. Uh, those road and bridge funds that we get every year, that's consistently about a million dollars. Uh, and then interest on money in the bank, you can see again, uh, we were at about sixty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty two. And then we've, uh, budgeted one point, or a hundred ninety one thousand on that. So, uh, interest income is looking up. But that's how your revenue breaks down. And again, this can only be used, uh, for those particular, uh, purposes. So one point four million of that five point six. Is dedicated to one particular purpose.
So with public works, uh, equipment, I'm thinking the trucks and bucket trucks, tree trimming, all that stuff. And I know we have a lot of those same functions going on with our parks department. You know, is there, is there, is there collaboration there budget wise?
Yeah, we, we share those particular items. So we looked at the earth again this year to make sure that that's the case. So if we're going to buy a boom truck and the parks department and we have three in public works, you know, we, we'll just share those items. Um, yeah, there's, there's no reason not to share and they're in the same facility. So all that stuff's right there.
So they're all stored in the same facility?
They are. Yeah. Yeah. Parks is in the municipal garage as well.
And do we do anything collaborating with school districts? Is that totally separate or?
Haven't collaborated with the school district on equipment.
Have not.
We have not.
I knew you were going to ask that. I, I was thinking of it, but I saved it for you.
Uh, so that's how the revenue breaks out. Uh, you can see project related revenue. So these are the, the grant funds that come in. So there's the big federal dollars that are coming in for E V chargers and also the central business district resurfacing. Uh, we've got the neighborhood improvement district in Ellenwood. That's where they're paying off those street improvements that were made. This will be the last year of that. Uh, so the, they're going to fulfill that obligation. The total revenue that's coming in, again, about six point nine million dollars. On the expense side, this is where your debt service payments are being made. Uh, so five hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars there for the police building. The C R S W C contribution, uh, we see that going, um, well, it's going to be relatively flat. So here's the annual there at two hundred thousand. But it's going to be offset by a deficit of about three hundred thousand that's anticipated, um, for fiscal year twenty four. And that includes the, is that the roof repair as well? That's driving that number up, the other repairs there. Yeah. So that, we see that actually dropping down to a hundred thousand in future years, but there's a roof repair that needs to be made. And so that's showing up, uh, in this particular line. The transfer to the general fund for operations, six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars there. And you can see we, we do have that increasing over time. Like Karen said. I guess that increases, uh, and she's correct, is due to, uh, increases and compensation. Transfer to the earth. So the capital money that comes in through the capital improvement sales tax, a lot of that goes out. And a lot of that use tax as well to fund the earth. So as we save for those capital items over time, uh, that's where that transfer takes place. The, uh, pay down of those ice rink expenditures, that will end in fiscal year twenty twenty five. So that was one point three million dollars that was spent. On the ice rink, uh, design and, um, uh, the previous common expenditures. Uh, we will pay another five hundred thousand dollars this year and then three hundred and fourteen in fiscal year twenty five. And then all of that will be, uh, paid off and that. Ice rink fund will zero out.
Did that include the, uh, you know? Demo and remediation over there of the building?
Those expenses were included as well.
That would be a lot of it, wouldn't it?
It was a portion. It's mostly design costs. Here's the municipal garage debt service. So again, this is, is, this is a scenario where we're borrowing the full amount for it. And you can see that those debt payments are about nine hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, two hundred thousand dollars would come towards the end of the year. If we actually got to the point where we could do a little bit of construction. In fiscal year twenty four. The earth funding gap. So if you remember, we did an analysis of the gap of, of the earth last year. And found that if we were to buy every item in there and we compare that to all the, the revenue that's in there and what's been saved. Uh, or all the funds that are in there and what's been saved, we found that we were short. Uh, so we have a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar extra contribution to the earth. Uh, to catch that up, to make sure that all the money's there when we go to spend it. The reason we ended up with a gap was when you build the earth and you put an item in, you're anticipating what that item will cost ten years out, with inflation the way it was. Uh, we got to the point where we weren't saving enough for the items that were included in that. Um, included in that fund. So we're trying to catch up and that's what those hundred thousand dollar payments are there. So on the expense side, and this is just debt transfers and then contributions to C R S W C. That's four point six million dollars. So you have six point nine coming in, four point six is already out the door, uh, for that. Uh, the rest goes into projects. And so on the project list, uh, I went over the projects that we have scheduled for, for fiscal year twenty four, uh, as we went through the budget there a few minutes ago. You can see in the future years, we do have projects that have been included here. Uh, so for instance, um. Going out, we've got sidewalks and curbs, which we do on a regular basis with, uh, community, uh, black grant funds that come in. We also have the hundred thousand dollars a year annually that goes into sidewalks, curbs and accessibility. The micro surfacings that pop up, we do have one of those and then out year, six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for Morelands, Hillcrest and White on Forest that will become do. Shaw Park lighting system upgrades. So that's a two year, uh, project. We're going to do in increments, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars each time. We have five hundred thousand dollars for council chamber security. That's been in here a long time. That's a discussion we probably need to have. Uh, but that's a, you know, it's a, it's a big item that's in fiscal year twenty six. We've got some time to talk about that one, uh, before we would actually spend it. Uh, but that's continues to be in the C I P and rolling forward. We have some office reconfiguration within the fire department in fiscal year twenty six. Asphalt overlays, this is, um. Uh, the center, this is everything over there at Shaw Park. Uh, that's going to come due, uh, here in an out year, seven hundred and twenty two thousand. Micro surfacing Davis Place, Oaknall Pavilion, or I'm sorry, uh, pavement rejuvenator. So that was a, um. A pilot that we had for the most part in some neighborhoods. Uh, it's worked out. Relatively well that we've been able to tell and other cities we've talked to that have used it have seen good results. So again, we're trying to extend that life where we're on that twenty one year cycle. If we can stretch that in any way, then we're going to try to do it. And that hundred and seventeen thousand would result in savings if we can push that out. Uh, Shaw Park feels three and four. So we're doing one and two this year. Uh, we've got that scheduled out here in twenty twenty seven. Oaknall lighting upgrades, we're going to have to upgrade the lighting in, in the park there. Uh, so that's a big project and we can probably try to seek some grant funds for that. That's seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars over two years. We have fire suppression system that's going to be required at the bottom garage. That's in twenty twenty eight. You see, that's three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Here's your charger project that'll be offset. We've got, uh, some repairs on the garages that need to be done. This is a ten south Brentwood. That's a three year project. So you can see those expenses there. Uh, that's the police building. The, uh, Shaw Park Aquatic Center, we've got a flooring, a flooring replacement. And then we have alley repairs, uh, out here in fiscal year twenty eight as well. So these are maintenance projects. Uh, you, you can see we don't really have new items that we were adding in here. This is maintaining what we already have. So just maintaining what we have and paying our debt service, um, when you get to that bottom line there. Um, and look at the fund balance that would be projected and that was up on the first. Side. I mean, this is, this is what you're working with, uh, knowing that that's coming in fiscal year twenty eight, probably about. Two million dollars or so that can go to additional projects that aren't listed. Uh, so there's some room there, but not a whole lot, uh, when we get that parks master plan complete. The master plan? Yeah, we're about a year out.
So. Spend any money.
No, you're, you're about three years out. You're a year for the plan, you're maybe a year to design and then a year to construct.
So back to the municipal garage, did you say that the, um, the debt service on that, if it were fully financed, would be nine hundred?
Nine hundred thousand. If you go the other way and you buy it down, it's about. Seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty thousand, somewhere in that range. There we go. Seven hundred and twenty eight.
Buy it down.
That's if you. That's if you take it out of your fund balance. And if you take it out of your fund balance, we really don't have any money left over for new projects in the.
Right. And, and, and definitely, I think that, I. I, I would think that we definitely need that cushion and that ability. But, um, have you also looked at, um? Is it, is it an all or nothing? We either fund it or we don't fund it? Are we kind of looking at the different options?
The needs analysis that we're doing, we're, we're basing this off of that study that was performed back in twenty twenty. I remember that, that presentation, I think that was. Uh, maybe in April or May of twenty twenty. So a lot of that work was done in twenty nineteen. We've put escalators on there with construction costs from what they had estimated and that's how we came up with that number. As we do this needs assessment, we may have some concept level. Uh, design work and then have a cost estimate to dial that in a little bit more. But, uh, the project that we had envisioned before, uh, we anticipate that would come in at about twelve five. If there's some way to save some money as we go through this needs analysis, we're certainly going to try to do that.
Right. And what I was really wondering is, is just the financing.
Just borrowing it upfront.
Thousand, a, a, a year is a lot. And if there's.
It is.
There's some balance where we can still, if there's some, yeah, formula, we can finance partial, whatever to get to. What we need as a cushion to continue to have the legal way to.
I think we'll.
That's what he's proposing.
I think what we'll do is this, uh, what, what I would propose is that we go ahead and use cash upfront for the needs assessment and maybe for some of that design work. If we pass a resolution before we start that project and say that. That could be subject to future financing, then once we have an idea of what we need to borrow, uh, once we have that dialed in, say it's twelve million and we could borrow that money and say twenty twenty five. We could actually pay ourselves back for the cash that we expended on those initial expenses. Uh, so you can wrap it into the financing that way. But I wouldn't finance anything until we have an idea of what we're. What the project's ultimately going to cost. So I'm, I'm not saying that we need to. Go ahead and finance twelve five today. Let's spend cash today because we've got the cash to go ahead and do the needs assessment and everything. Once we know how much that's going to cost, that we can. Go retroactively, go back and finance those cash payments that we made early on.
How many, how many years would that financing be?
Twenty years. That's twenty years at four percent.
Four percent?
At four percent. Yeah. Our triple A rating will get us four percent right now.
Four percent now?
Yeah. It's. It's great if you, it's great if you look at consumer, consumer loans and consumer debt, people would, would kill for four percent, but.
I'd be surprised if we get that.
That's, that's actually, we, we worked with our financial advisor on that and given our. Our payment history, given our financial strength, given our triple A rating, four percent is.
We get that through.
What they envision.
Through regular banks? Where do we get that?
No, those are, those would be special obligation bonds.
Obligation bond.
Municipal bonds.
Okay.
And I'm, we're not going to vote on that today. We're just.
No, I, we do vote on the C, uh, the five year C I P as a part of the budget. But if we need to make adjustments to that as we go, we do quarterly budget amendments. Uh, the, the C I P is really, you know, flexible over time. You put this five year plan in place, but. It doesn't actually appropriate any money. What appropriates the money is the annual operating budget and what you're approving for twenty twenty four. So we have twenty twenty four expenses that are in there. And when you approve the budget, you're only locking in twenty twenty four. You're not locking in those future years. This is just a plan you're adopting to set your expenditures in the future.
So we are not making the decision, yea or nay, to borrow twelve million. Or, or, or to, um, offset that twelve million, nine hundred versus seven hundred.
The reason I'm asking the question is we'd like to know which five year C I P version to incorporate in the budget document. So if the board would prefer to, uh, just knowing what we know now. To, to finance the full amount, then we'll put, we'll put it in this way. If the board would rather, uh, buy it down, buy down the financing and, and. Take it out of the fund balance, then we'll show it in the budget that way. It's just how do we want to show the five year C I P, uh, in this particular document?
You just want feedback. That's all you want, right?
Yeah, we, we just need to know what to insert in the document. And then we'll, we'll go forward with it. And if it changes, then we'll have that conversation and we can make that adjustment.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, I don't.
It doesn't make a big difference on it. It makes a big difference next year more than this year because the twenty four appropriation. And that's what we're approving when we approve that ordinance, doesn't change a whole lot based on this decision. Where it really starts to be impacted is when we get to that construction cost. So.
Well, I don't know. It's, it seems like the more clean and conservative. Way to look at it right now is just to say, just borrow the whole, just put in the whole amount that we would have to borrow. And then, like you said, until we really know what the whole amount is, then we, we really wouldn't know how much we would want to buy down or anything like that. So. As long as we can kind of keep in our minds eye what the, what the total. Is going to look like roughly. That, that to me is cleaner, but I'm not saying I wouldn't want to buy it down ever. I'm just saying that seems to be a simpler way to look at it for now. But I'm open to anyone's thoughts.
Yeah, this is, this is simply a plan. This doesn't lock you in anything, but as we start to plan this out over five years and how we're going to do things, that's, that's where it's helpful for us. Um, and as we have discussions, especially with the parks master plan, about whether or not we have money to actually do projects.
We have projects that come out that. We want to do, if we do, yes.
Yeah. And you can always use general fund reserves. And again, the, the general fund balance is really strong. So if you wanted to pull a million dollars out of that at some point. Uh, to have, you know, to help, uh, fund that than you could, but just looking at the capital fund alone, and that's where you would typically pay for your capital expenses. Uh, if we buy down that finance amount, there's, there's not going to be anything left.
Right. I mean, yeah, we don't, we don't want to take that down to zero on the capital fund, but the other options. So whatever you'd recommend as far as a planning purpose, um.
Personally, I, I would rather show it this way and let's.
Which ways?
Let's hold some, let's hold some money back for, for projects that would come up. I would plan to finance the full amount at this point in time.
Finance the whole amount. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, yeah.
Wouldn't agree with it.
That's fine. Yeah. I think, I think that's best.
The whole thing. Makes total sense.
All right. Well, that's what we'll include in the, in the budget. Are there any questions on the C I P?
Not for now.
Again, I wish I had really exciting projects in there and, uh, they're, they're all maintenance at this point.
I, I, I do have a couple of questions, actually. If I think about, let's take the street, the lighting in Shaw Park. And I. Full disclosure, I don't walk through Shaw Park at night a lot. But I haven't noticed any problems. I mean, are there things that we need to fix and replace? Or is it just a general upgrade that we're talking about? Or why do we?
It's like our larger lighting system. I mean, we do have issues with it. Uh, the. System definitely isn't energy efficient. We've got a lot of areas where it's direct buried cable. It's not in conduit. It's just, it's going to have to happen. We're going to have to make the. The upgrade at some point. So we can continue to patch it together, but we, we know it's coming. So. At some point, we're just going to have to make the expense. The longer we late, uh, we wait, like we've seen with some of these other things, just the more expensive it gets. So, uh, if we can go ahead and fund it and, um. Avoid the maintenance costs at the same time and the, the price escalation, then. It's on our maintenance schedule. Now, we can definitely, as we get closer to it, because it's still a couple of years out. If it looks like it's in the kind of condition where we might be able to wait or push another year or two, then we can have that conversation. But for now, that's when we've got it slotted in as something that needs to be done. Oh, and I meant to show you this too. I apologize. Uh, the bond construction funds, um, just wanted to tell you again, we, uh. You can see what's being paid for out of there. Let's go down to this though. Uh, this is the, um. Ice rink project. So you can see that gets zeroed out, uh, in twenty twenty five. So that's where those payments are made. Uh, the street lighting, yeah, this is the bond construction fund that we use for that twenty fourteen, uh, general obligation bond. So like I said, that's going to be used up this year. Here's those street lighting replacement projects. So the balance going into this year, um. Or the, the total amount left is about two point one million dollars. We're going to put seventy nine thousand towards the central business district resurfacing. The rest go to those lighting projects and we're finally zeroed out. So we've been spending that down ten years now. The rest go to those lighting projects and we're finally zeroed out, so we've been spending that down ten years now. And so.
And those lighting projects are the ones that were identified as pretty much the worst in the city.
Yeah, those are the areas we needed to hit first, uh there's the unfunded list, uh that's included at the bottom of this, so these are projects that are. That are on our list, but they're unfunded, uh we've got the multipurpose facility uh project on there, the commons project. Uh and that's a carryover from uh when we had it in the CIP, so fifteen five there was the original amount we had, so just kind of dropped down to the section. The street lighting replacement for wide ons, four point two million dollars, we don't have any funding identified for that or a year. Uh to do the larger street ri- lighting replacement uh for the other areas in the city that needed thirteen million dollar project, so uh huge price tag, we're kind of. Just taking it on incrementally as we can right now, uh but if we wanted to do the whole thing, it's thirteen million dollars in today's dollars, and that that continues to go up. Uh over time, so we've got some other improvements in here, park land acquisition, something we have in every year. Uh some more improvements in Shaw Park, you know, hopefully this is something that CCF can work on over time. Um and help us in that particular area, but we do have some unfunded needs down the road uh that will pop up. Another thing I'm sure we'll talk about in the future is subdivision monuments. So that's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh that's sitting out there to replace or repair some of those. Uh we are through the um, sorry to jump around so much. From the bond construction money, uh we talked about this last year, those that were in the red on that assessment list. We did have a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars uh roughly for repairs for subdivision monuments in fiscal year twenty three, so. That's an ongoing project there.
Well, if there, if there are no other questions from the board, I wanted to give uh Mr. Miller a chance to ask any questions. Been patient, but you have any questions at all or?
No, that's great.
Very good.
And that's why we're gonna start with a needs assessment this year, before we even getting in into designing anything is. Figuring out exactly what's gonna be required going forward, and we're looking thirty, forty years out here.
Thank you, Bruce.
And I I think it is part of the thinking going just in everyday, on an everyday basis, but. But um maybe we need to share how we look at things, um and I'd be, you know, of course, I think we'd all be interested in that, but. We just went through a whole year and a half of uh doing some public um. Soul searching on trying to come to that two million dollar number before we decided on the trash move. So um that we did, and that was kind of a, in in a big way, we did it, but department by department. I don't know, we can think about that, we can think about our communications um strategy around it. Got three of them right there.
That is true.
Yeah. Yeah, uh huh.
Well, no, we, well, I was gonna say, we we do do an analysis now, a third party analysis, I'm not sure in local government what that looks like.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's, that's great input, appreciate it.
That's great, yeah, thank you.
Uh okay, anything else, anybody, any of you guys wanna tell us anything? Yep. Of course.
Thank you, chief. And and thanks to everybody, all of our department heads that that helped put this together, so it's, it is a. It is a long process to get to this point, a lot of meetings and a lot of analysis on. All of those expenditures, like I said, we go through every line item every year, how much paper are we gonna buy, how many envelopes? Uh how many signs do we have to print, now, we go through everything, uh so it's a lot to get here. And so I I appreciate everybody's effort, and especially uh Karen and Kayla back there that, on top of um dealing with new auditors and and all of that. Um you know, got this budget put together on time, and as we went through it, it's, you know, it's, it's solid, the numbers are good, um. So great job by all, I appreciate it.
Yep, thanks, everybody. Okay, so is there any other business for us today?
That's it.
Alright, I think, you know, a lot of, I don't know about everyone else, but I do wanna go back and absorb this more, and I know that over time we can make adjustments, but um really good job and. Pretty and very clearly presented.
Nice job, David, thanks.
Yep, okay, um we don't need to adjourn or have a motion or anything, okay, well, that's all, folks.
Alright, thanks all.